Turned in this week. You'll see at the top you'll have a project title, a department, the account numbers, whether the project is a health, safety, or welfare, or a mandate, whether it's renovation or replacement and expansion. I pulled this off of last year just to give you an example. This is actually for street paving. And this is a renovation and replacement. It gives you a description of the project which appropriates funds for our paving. It also tells you where those monies will be spent, on which roads, and then a justification. Down at the bottom, it'll show you the budget years and which money will be spent, how much. And you'll see that at last year, our total requested funds for street paving was around $2 million. The second sheet is sort of a milestone sheet. It gives you an idea of when we'll be doing those certain projects, so when we'll be doing planning, engineering, when we'll be acquiring right away if we need it, awarding the contract, and then the actual purchase or the construction. The next section, the middle section, talks about the expenditures themselves, how much we'll be spending on each of those, the planning, designing, engineering, how much we'll be spending on construction. And then the final one at the bottom is your sources of funds. So where are the funds coming from? In this case, most all of our funds come from current revenues for paving. So you'll see down there at the bottom, hopefully, all those numbers match. That worksheet is then plugged into a summary sheet for the department. You'll see all of the projects. They're given a priority code by the department head, and then they're giving an overall priority code by myself. You'll see some of them have numbers and some of them have letters. If they are recommended for funding in the next fiscal year, so the 14, 15 in this case, it will have a number. And if it has a letter, that means it's scheduled for years two through five for a future project. As you can see, local street paving is always our number-one project, roughly about $2 million, and then how the classifications for expenditures are broken up into, and then your revenue classifications. That is then taken for a summary of all departments. And so you'll see administration, public buildings, police, planning and zoning, streets, and Powellville down there at the bottom. All the projects are plugged into a five-year chart, again, keeping the same priority codes. Initially, I set the priority codes, and then the board changes those priority codes as you see fit. Sometimes you'll feel like a certain project needs to be done sooner rather than later. And so those priorities can change. And that's what's nice about this, is it is a flexible planning tool. And then we total for every department. And give you an example, last year, the total CIP for the Town of Montree was about $7.4 million. And again, that's over that five-year period. It is important to note that we only ask the board to approve the first-year funding. So as you look through the other years, it doesn't necessarily mean that that project may exist in four or five years. You approve the first year, and then the others are planning years. We also, as I mentioned earlier, calculate our revenues. So we do some revenue projections for five years. We look at our taxes, sales tax, unrestricted, intergovernmental, restricted, our permits and fees, sales and services, calculate all that up, average our capital expense based on historical data, and show how much money, or, I'm sorry, debt service we have existing and proposed. What's nice in the general fund, of course, is we have no existing debt, what's proposed, and then revenue and expenditures. So the next steps for staff, and including the board, we review projects and establish our priorities. We consider the revenue and expenditure impacts. We will draft a CIP and present that to you next month in February. The CIP public hearing will be held in March. And of course, you can meet as many times as you like during that period. And then we plan on asking you to adopt a CIP in March or April. We always encourage folks to give us input. We value those opinions. We have asked the, of course, major entities, if they know of projects, we ask people out in the audience, of course, if they know of projects that they would like us to consider to please give to staff. We do consider those. We type up the worksheets and include those in a CIP as planning documents. So again, if you have projects that you like, that you want us to consider, please see us. Does the board have any questions?
Are you sure one thing, Ron, that in last year's thing for Texas Road Bridge didn't go ahead?
That's right. Often what you find in a CIP, we develop a CIP very early, in the December part of the year. So by July, of course, a lot of things have changed. One of the things that we have carried over for the last two or three years now is the construction money for Texas Road Bridge. We, like MSD, do not want to go and tear up a road right after we pave it to do construction. So what we do is plan for the improvements to Texas Road to be held at the same time we're improving the bridge, so that all of it be done at the same time. So if that money is not allocated, it's gone back into the CIP and put back into the general fund at a later date. That's a good point.
Any other questions, Ron? Tonight, I would like to say thank you to the men and women who have volunteered their services for town committees and boards. We had a presentation from Matt, who serves on the MSD, but there are many other men and women who serve our town as volunteers, and we're grateful for that. Also, I'd like to say, they've gone now, but ADS has certainly been responsive to the commission and to the community in the change of the building. When you look at where it started, where it is now, they really listened, and I'm very grateful for that. Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, under the consent agenda, the board adopted the December 4th Agenda Meeting Minutes, the December 11th Town Council Meeting Minutes, and the December 16th Special Meeting Minutes. We have several communications for you tonight. Texas Road Bridge, some actual good news for Texas Road Bridge Replacement Project. Received an email this last week or so that an MOA, which is a memorandum of an agreement with the Historic Preservation Office, is no longer needed. The Historic Preservation Office has changed its opinion, requiring no longer a timber bridge, but one that will fit into the Montree historical context. Because of that, we have now received our category exclusion document, and signatures are being requested from everyone. So I think the mayor signed it this week, and Federal Highway Administration, the state will sign it hopefully in the next week or two. So good news that now we have a CE. We can move forward with design now, final design.
Ron, could I ask, just since we have such a large number of the public here, when did the planning start for the Texas Road Bridge?
The question was, when did-
How many years has it been?
It's been about five or six. It's been a long time.
Long time. Thank you.
I have a question. When they're going to be able to reference the historical bridge structures in Montree, does that mean the current bridge structures or the ones from before that?
No, it's the current bridge structures. It'd be the one, Lookout, Community Center Circle, those bridges.
Okay.
Sorry. The Town Hall project update was reported earlier during the presentation. We did receive our Geotech and soils report this week. I will send that out to you, and it'll be available on our website.
Could you give us a sense of what happened there?
As Mike reported last month, very good news. They did not find any rock that couldn't be moved with just normal, heavy equipment. So again, no rock was found on the site. And I think that was down to 20 feet. Is that correct? 20 feet. The well, A O2 Replacement Project, as you know, the first well that we drilled with FEMA money was dry. We went down close to about 800 feet. We have asked the North Carolina Rural Water Association for assistance, and they are tracking down a camera that we can put down the existing well. We're going to see if there's an opportunity for us to spend some money, of course FEMA money, and repair that well. And if not, then we have selected another well location that we will be drilling. As I reported, FEMA was kind enough to say that they will help support the town and provide any additional monies that we need for completing the project. I'm also pleased to report that Upper Kentucky Road Paving and Utility Assessment Project is complete. They finished the water line. They got the final testing today, and everything looks good. Know that we will be doing paving in spring when asphalt plants open back up. But again, the utility work, road work up on Upper Kentucky is now complete. I was asked, just to give a quick update on the Grape Beer Trail Annexation status. Just as a brief background, some folks in the community, Wade Burns in particular, was working with folks in that area to discuss the possibility of voluntary annexation. As you know, state laws changed a couple of years ago, which made it very difficult for towns to do involuntary annexation. It became very expensive. I believe that at one point, the board had indicated they were willing to go ahead and put trunk lines into those areas, primarily the sewer line, since we have water lines that are already there. Some of the folks in that area felt that we should extend what I call the fingers off of the trunk lines back to the individual lots. So that's where that sort of stood, the board basically saying, we are interested in helping with trunk lines, but we won't go beyond that. And so we have not received a petition from the folks up on Grape Beer for voluntary annexation. At the last meeting, or I'm sorry, at the meeting a few months ago, get my date straight, the board had asked to take a look at Chapter M, which is the extension of our utilities in the ETJ area. And the town attorney and I are working on those now. We have run into a couple of issues that we're going to need to talk to the board about. She had suggested that perhaps we might have some time during your board retreat to come back to y'all and talk about that in more detail. Changing Chapter M will affect some other decisions that y'all have made in the past, and we want to make sure everybody's comfortable with the direction we're heading.
In relation to that, I've had contact with a couple of different persons who are property owners in that area, and would ask if staff could report next month on the stormwater management, I wrote it all down, ordinance, Article III, Section 305.1, as it relates to setback requirements from surface water, if intermittent or perennial surface water, if you could include that in your report next month, or if staff could prepare some information.
Great. Glad to hear it, Dave. Yes. Yes, Dave, if you could do that.
Of course, it relates to the entire municipality, but specifically, some of the property owners in this Upper Grape Beer area are concerned about that. So if you could give us information on that.
Yes, ma'am. We'll be glad to.
Specifically, Ron, why we're at 30 feet, and I think the county's at 25 feet, and why we're so much-
I think one of the concerns of the folks up there, when we originally looked at this ordinance, the state came out with a mandate of greater than an acre. Am I saying that right there? Acre or more. And Montree, because that affected so few properties, primarily just Billy Graham's, I believe, they decided at that time, the board did, to go less than an acre. And so I think that's the major difference between the two ordinances. David, do you know if it's 25 feet for Buckland County?
I believe it's 30 feet if it's along the state guidelines for the building front area. If y'all could just investigate that and bring it back to us next month.
Okay. Be glad to. A couple of board members have asked about the comprehensive plan update. As you know, we had a very, what I thought, helpful process in 2008 for adopting a comprehensive plan. Very well received. It is time again, and we are on our sixth year now, in the comprehensive plan, time again to update the comprehensive plan. Again, that's a plan that invites participation from all the major entities, from cottage owners, from residents, to sit down and plan out where we would like to be as a town five or 10 years out. I'm pleased to report that we had a total of about 97 short, mid, and long-range term goals. And since 2008, we have now completed, or nearly completed, 73% of those. A lot of those that are not completed were actually brought before council in one form or fashion, and council decided at that time not to pursue some of the recommendations for very good reasons. So again, 73% of what was recommended is complete or nearly complete. So what we would like to do as staff is go ahead and ask during your board retreat that you consider talking a little bit about the comprehensive plan and how we might go about updating that plan. I do not have an update for Board of Elections unless Commissioner Standard has one. One of my favorite time of year, my annual performance evaluation is due. Normally, the board does this in January, early February. It takes me about 20 to 30 days to put the packets together, to send those questionnaires, response forms out to the board, as well as to staff, and then y'all set up a time to review those and conduct my performance evaluation. Do you have some dates in mind, or would you like me just to go ahead and set it up and throw out a date? I was trying to get, I know y'all are going to be in and out of town a lot. It would be helpful to get the dates from y'all so that maybe I could pick one where everybody's there. And we can do that by email if you'd like. Also, it is time to schedule our annual board retreat. And again, we usually hold that in February or March, depending on the year. So I would ask if, I don't know, Mayor, if you want to spend some time tonight doing it, to pick some dates, or if you want us to throw out some dates.
Let's just throw out some dates. It's a take your time.
Okay. I know in the past, we have held it on a Saturday. Last year, we held it during the week, which was very convenient for folks. Do y'all have a preference?
During the week is better for staff, who are involved in it. So I would prefer if we can work it out during the week to convenience the staff with that.
Great. Thank you. All right. Well, we'll put together some times, February, March, and see how that looks for y'all. Finally, just one other. Some of the folks are here tonight, and I was afraid I was going to leave some people off, but a small group in the community provided lunch to town staff during the holiday. And I just want folks to know how much we appreciated that. We appreciated the kind words that were said, and we appreciated the food. So thank y'all, to everybody involved. We certainly did appreciate that. So unless there's any other reports or communications, that concludes my-
Thanks, Ron. Administering reports, chief?
Our dispatch calls were down. We had 64 dispatch calls. I think that's because everybody in the firm is out of town. We had house checks all over the place. It was very empty, but we did have some situations involved that came up during that time period. We did over 79 spot checks, not including house checks. We had 291 total residential and building. Also, we had some disturbance calls, more than usual. We had nine of those, where we've been having one or two in the past, and we'll go over some of those. The town services that we provided was 375. MRA was 1-0-3. We had, college was six. On the first, we received a cell phone that was found in roadway at Lookout, and we returned it to the owner. On the fourth, while routine patrol, approximately 2:00 in the morning, I think, we came across a motor vehicle accident. The subject was arrested for DWI. On the fifth, we participated in the Black Mountain Christmas Parade. We participated in the Black Mountain Centers on the 12th. On the 16th, we had a disturbance, verbal disturbance call on West Virginia Terrace. On the 17th, we had a physical assault, where the complainant took out two assault warrants, and we arrested that subject. On the 17th, we did a multi-jurisdiction checkpoint, which was with the North Carolina Highway Patrol, Buckland County Sheriff, DHR, Black Mountain PD, APD, Fletcher PD, and there was too many to name that was there. They had the back unit out, which is the blood alcohol testing unit. The good result of that is there was no DWI arrest. Still have one in Montree, but the results are right there. They had two drug arrests, two other crimes, one driving while revolt, an 18 citations issued. Montree issued one for no operator's license and expired. On the 17th, while on routine patrol, late shift, found Husqvarna chainsaw in the middle of the road. It was later returned to the tree company, who apparently dropped it off. On the 18th, we had a Larchmere vehicle, one of the first, I think, we've had in Montree that I can remember. And yes, the keys were left on the vehicle. We had it reported about 9:53. We recovered the vehicle in the parking lot at about 5:50 that PM at the primary school, and it was returned to the owner. An interesting factor that we had was on the 19th, while on routine patrol, we found a vehicle on the side of the road. It was not connected to a driveway that we thought was involved in a wreck. We were out there for quite some time looking at the vehicle. All the lug nuts on the vehicle were removed, every one of them, which we thought was a very, very, very bad prank. We ran the vehicle. It did not come back stowed. It was out of Winston Salem. We finally had a person that was in a cab and holler down to us that it was her husband's vehicle, and asked her to come down. He had tried to move the vehicle approximately 11:00, 12:00 that evening to go to lunch, and we fell off. We're real worried in that context that somebody would play that kind of prank. That's a very dangerous, dangerous prank. We talked to the husband. The husband said he Googled it, and the only thing he found was his wife was possibly trying to kill him. Mandated that, though, and she said she did not want to kill him. On the 20th, we had a, we received a call from Larchmere Firewood on Providence. Officers engaged some suspects up there. They thought the wood was leftover. It was privately owned. The owner declined to prosecute. On the 21st, which is probably the reason for the 19th, we had two tires stolen off the vehicle on Appalachian. This, again, was parked off the road, not in a driveway. So we're kind of interested in, on John Knox, if anybody's seen anybody around the vehicle. That's a possibility, if those subjects were looking for tires, because they did take two tires off the Subaru on Appalachian Road. They're totally different tires. We haven't had any incidents since that, and it's still under investigation. On the 27th, we're called, referenced Lost High Court on Lookout Mountain. They were located. The police department would also like to thank all the residents that provided a luncheon for us. Also, as a note, all Black Mountain Police Department has completed their state and departmental mandates requirements. Was totaled about 228 hours. Also note that the police department is assisting. Fire Department now is doing GPS to all fire hydrants, and we're going to talk to the town probably at the retreat about what that means for us. But what they have is assist them now. They're hoping to develop, if we do have a fire, the GPS unit will take them to the closest available hydrant that's active. So there's no delays in that. So the police department's been assisting in that. We also got a very nice thank you from Stuart Vaughn in reference to a house check that we've been providing at his father's party. And that's about it.
I have one statement, and I appreciate that the police chief verified to me that the police who work on Christmas Eve are aware of and protect Santa as he is in this area. My grandson was very concerned whether police knew when and where Santa was. So I checked with our police chief on that evening, and he assured me that they would provide protection here, and that police where we were would provide protection for Santa. For Santa. For Santa. For Santa.
The weekly sanitation pickup will be on Tuesday, January 20th, in lieu of Martin Luther King holiday, beginning that Monday. The street department, we're continuing to clean the leaves from the streets and ditches, and we're probably three-quarters way through with that, so we should be wrapping that up pretty soon. We have also started the FEMA project, drainage repair period, Community Center Circle, and that should be completed in the next couple of weeks, weather permitting. We've also started the hydrant testing and flushing, and we're about a third of the way through that, so probably another month, month and a half, we should be wrapping up on that. And I urge residents, if they have any discolored water in or in that area, please give us a call, and we'll get that cleared up as quickly as possible. And another note to that, we've got the water chlorinated, so it's safe to drink, even though it may be a little bit discolored at times. And finally, we had two water leaks that we responded to during the past month, and they both ended up being on the resident's side of the meters. We'll probably have more after this goes through.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you. Finance, Steve?
You have your preliminary reports for December, and the final report for November. Just to walk you through this real quickly, on the general fund, revenues year-to-date through November 30th are $307,400. That compares to $608 last year. I just want to make a little comment on the F alarm taxes. There's not a problem with those. The county has gone to a new system for reporting those, and they seem to have had some problems in getting it up and running, and so there's been a little bit of delay in the reporting things to us. There's not really a problem with those coming in. It's just being slow reporting it to us. Expenditures, year-to-date, $686,000. That's quite a blow, $922, same time last year. Through November, we're looking at a deficit of $311,000. That, of course, will change once the bulk of the property taxes come in the next couple of months here. In the water fund, revenues year-to-date of $143,000. That's very similar to $145,000, same time last year. Expenditures, $53,000, a little bit more than $41,000, same time last year. So far, we're looking at a surplus in the water fund of $90,000. And then the cash and investments report through December 31st, we have a total in all accounts of $1.8 million, and we earned almost $100. all accounts of 1.8 million dollars, and we earned almost $100 in interest for this today.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you.
The December zoning and building inspection report contains one zoning permit application that was approved. There were eight building permit applications that were processed and approved. Total of 12 inspections. It was kind of slow month for inspections, one reinspection for a total of 13. I did have to post one building that was found to be defective. Howardton Hall, the college, suffered some issues from water, apparently leaking from bathrooms above the lobby, that caused some areas of the concrete to fall and crack and actually fall to the floor. They got structural engineers out to look at that and are in the process of coming up with some repairs for that. They had to create some emergency egress provisions in the lobby to get the students in and out of the building, as well as out of the cafeteria, to keep egress safe. So they've done quite a bit of work in the initial steps trying to get the repair done, but that's underway currently, and are waiting on plans to review for the actual repairs. Let's see. There were total of 27 fire inspections that I conducted during the month for MRA properties. Those are basically completed at this time, so that finishes up most of the larger fire inspections for the year. Planning and zoning did not meet during the month of December, nor did the board adjustments, but both of those will be meeting this month. Planning and zoning will be looking at the noise ordinance, I believe, that you sent forward, and we do have a request for a variance consideration, so that will be occurring later this month as well. Unless you have any questions, I think that's enough for you.
David, the Aids building applications, are those new, or new construction or remotes?
It breaks out, if you look under the description in the last column, it breaks out. It's not showing on the screen, but what those entail, most of those are like repairs, plumbing, mechanical, change outs, and sort of things. Haven't issued any new house permits as well.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Mission report to Mary. Several things. First of all-
Thank you very much. Couple things. First, perhaps related to Santa's visit to Montreat, I'm happy to report, and perhaps Santa was responsible for this, that the Smurfs have once again come back to Montreat, and Papa Smurf and Vanity Smurf were once again in residence on the stop sign at the corner of Louisiana and Assembly. This actually brings resolution to a previously violent crime that occurred there, where they had been nailed to the top there of the post, and then they had been chopped off at the knees several months ago. So they have been missing for, much to the dismay of a number of those who walk that routinely. But one day, towards the end of November, they showed up again, so we, hopefully, they will be allowed to stay for a whole-